Good morning. I'd like to call this meeting of the Public Works Committee to order. Members of the public are advised that our meetings are webcast live by the city of Hamilton and temporarily archived to the city's website. Other individuals and the media may also be audibly and/or visually recording at this meeting, as well a reminder that all electronic devices are to be switched to a non-audible function during committee meetings. Our first order of business is the appointment of a Chair and Vice Chair for 2019. May I please have nominations for Chair for 2019? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Madam Clerk, and I move that the Chair be Counselor Ferguson and that the Vice Chair be Counselor Danko, seconded by Mayor Eisenberger.
Thank you. All in favor? So Counselor Ferguson, would you please make your way over to the dais and assume the role of Chair?
Well, welcome, everyone, to the December meeting of the Public Works Committee. I'd first like to thank everyone for their confidence in selecting me as Chair of this committee, that we have a lot of interesting things that are going to happen in 2018. I look forward to working with John Paul as our Vice Chair and moving our agenda along. So we'll go back. So, Madam Clerk, is there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I have just received an added notice of motion, item 12.1, respecting Transit Day.
Respecting?
Transit Day.
Okay. Is that the only change?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
A motion to approve the agenda. Moved by Brad Pearson, seconded by Vanderbeek. All in favor? Okay, let's move on to declarations of interest. Does anybody have a declaration of interest? Okay, seeing none, it's gone to approval of the previous meeting. Now, can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the September 17th as presented? Moved by Esther Paul? Thank you. Just fold a blank there for a second.
Yeah.
What's your name down there?
I am your latest greatest member of the bar of work.
I didn't need a speech, I just needed your name.
Better be you.
Okay, well, I have control of the microphone up here, just so you know. All in favor approving the minutes? Pose, that motion carries. Let's move on, there's no communications.
I'm your chair.
Okay. Let's move on to -- I may have trouble turning your microphone on today too, Mr. Mayor. Let's move on to delegation requests. There's a request from Susie Scott respecting the installation of time as for a future meeting. Moved by Marula, seconded by Counselor Nan. All in favor? That's carried. Let's move on now to item 7, which are consent items. The first is the Dundas J.L. Greitmeyer Arena. There are significant issues there with scheduling and delays, so does anybody have any comments? Counselor Vanderbeek.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I want to say thank you to the city staff who've been involved in this issue. It's been an extremely frustrating and very disappointing time for all of us, and I really want to say that staff have bent over backwards to try and resolve this. I'll use that word. And I think what's become most obvious to me is that we, as a corporation, have some work to do on our procurement policies and the wording in our contracts where we can. And I think that the long and the short of it is that we are not giving our staff or have not been able to give our staff the tools they need to be able to execute those contracts and keep projects going so that they don't end up in the way that the Dundas Library did and the way that -- I'm only speaking about my ward, the way the Dundas Library did and the way that the arena did under this contractor. So I think it is important for the public to realize that staff have to work within their authority, and our contracts bind us to certain things. And so the process becomes mired sometimes in the legalese and the things that we are in some areas bound by law to put into contracts. And so I am hopeful that through this, there may be an opportunity for us to relook at the things that we can affect and the way that we can give our staff the opportunity to be able to keep these things going and protect us and therefore protect ourselves. So having said that, I want to go back to what I said in the beginning. The staff have been very helpful. The organizations that are affected have been gracious and cooperative, and I think that there is more we can do for them in the future, and we will have to look at that. But it impacts -- I want people to understand, it doesn't just impact the people who use the ICE. It impacts the people who live in the neighborhood, it impacts the people at Dundas Little Theater, it impacts the people who use the swimming pool, and it is far-reaching. So I -- to those people, I say, I'm sorry that it's been a long time, but I appreciate your patience and your graciousness. And to the people who are in the arenas that are affected because Greitmeyer's closed, a big thank you to them too, because that goes well, it goes well beyond Dundas. So I'm hopeful that this will be a turning point for us and that we will be able to do something about how we do things in the future. Anyway, I think that's enough, but thank you anyway. Thank you to everyone.
Thank you, Counselor. I can't imagine what you're going through with your community, this thing being so late. It's a horrible embarrassment that we have a contractor that just has no consideration and no respect for timelines and the impact it has on the community. So I believe in, I don't know whether Rome, you can address this, but I believe you -- procurement is bringing a report to AFNA on this particular contractor. Is that correct?
Through the Chair, facility staff's working with both legal and procurement, and there is a report that will be coming in, I think it's in mid-January.
Okay, you can't get it in before then because the fear is that this contractor wins some more projects before we take any action.
Through the Chair, we've spoken to Tina from procurement. I think the earliest date is mid-January. She's working with the Clerk's Department.
Okay. I will talk to you offline about that, and clearly some action has to be taken. So Counselor Whitehead.
Yes, Mr. Chair, and I certainly sympathize with the award, Counselor, and it's not just unique to her award as well. So I guess, and I've raised this in the past, about, you know, it's not just about the procurement and what we can and can't do and ensure that we got accountability, transparency, and certainly getting value for the tax dollar, but it's also, we need to understand the scope, responsibility, and power of the project managers that are overseeing these projects. And I think we, at some point, I'll be requesting a formal report to understand the authority, the power of the project managers in overseeing these contracts and whether or not there's more that can be done on that front, because, whether it's a road construction or whether it's an arena construction, it's starting to rear its head more and more and more in regards to timelines not being met, inferior work being done, and there's got to be a solution, and I think we need to delve deeper into the processes. Thank you.
Yeah, and as your committee chair, I'll undertake also to lead a program to hopefully put in place more liquidated damages that have more teeth, that forces a contractor. We saw it on the stadium, we saw it on other projects, but this one has got to be the poster child for putting in liquidated damages that provide teeth and encourage contractors to bring something back on schedule rather than just disappear for a couple of weeks and go and work on other projects. So I'll undertake, as your board chair, to do that. So there's no other speakers on us, and there is a recommendation that we receive this report. Moved by Counselor Vanderbeek, seconded by Counselor Pearson. All in favor? That's carried. Let's move on to 7.2, which is intersection control awards 2, 8, 9, 12, and 13. Is there any questions? If not, a motion to approve. Moved by Counselor Collins, seconded by Counselor Danko. All in favor? That's carried. Report from the Hamilton Cycling Committee dated September 17th respecting cycling education in Ontario schools. Is there any questions? Right, Counselor Parr.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Just through you two, whom member on staff, I received an urgent note, I think it was Friday afternoon, from one of the, I believe, members of the Cycling Committee, if not a recent past member, regarding some missing knockdown sticks on the cycling northeast corner of Herkimer and Queen. But the reason why I bring it up now, the resident had told me that the Cycling Committee members had moved an emergency motion to have these barriers replaced in a fairly quick fashion. I know this is a Cycling Committee agenda we're seeking to approve here from September, maybe it was the October meeting. I just don't see it in the agenda, I don't see an emergency motion, but I did travel down that way a couple of times on the weekend and did see that all of the knockdowns are missing, and there's lots of tire marks where the bike lane is right at that busy intersection. So I'm not sure who to speak to, but through you, are you aware of the emergency motion? And is this something maybe right after this meeting I can meet with the appropriate staff offline to get the fix in, knowing that there is some Cycling Committee agenda that seeks to address this?
Director of Engineering has given me a signal. Is this something you could speak to? Or Dan, do you want to take it?
Maybe, thank you, Mr. Chair. Maybe I'll just start, and for the benefit of the new members of Public Works Committee, Brian Hollingworth, generally you'll see him attending Public Works Committees. Now that transportation planning has moved over into planning, there is a fair bit of overlap, and I suspect that this issue is one that Brian could likely speak to.
Right.
Through the Chair, Rachel Johnson. Here is our staff liaison for the Cycling Committee, and she confirms that that issue was captured and will be captured in the November minutes, so when the November minutes come to this committee, it will be there. We're well aware of the issue and are following up on it.
Counselor Parr, have they been repaired?
I don't believe they've been repaired.
My guess is, Mr. Chair, just as a quick follow-up, we probably don't need to wait for those minutes to come to some field.
We just need to hear, the staff say they're going to have them fixed this week, that's all we need to hear.
This week? I didn't hear that. Okay, that's great, this week, thank you.
Brian Willie, be fixed this week?
Looked to my colleague, Roads and Traffic, who has the staff to do that, but we will commit to that.
Okay, engineering. Okay, great, thank you. Any other comments or questions around the second committee? Oh, sorry. I do have, yeah.
Is it a constant thing that we're dealing with? Because if we are, I think we better think of another idea. I just, I was on the committee just last week, and I'm just learning, but I know that sometimes barriers cause accidents as well, so I'm very concerned how often they break down, how much the cost is, and let's figure that out. Thank you.
Anybody from staff wish to comment on that? Is the technology, the right technology?
Through the Chair, it really depends on the location, and they do often break down more in the winter. That's why, over time, we're starting to move to more permanent protected facilities, you know, the concrete barriers and the like, recognizing that these have some challenges with maintenance.
Counselor Paul, something else?
Well, concrete.
I'm a biker myself. I think concrete, we have to really look at it, if it is the proper way. You know, they might cause more accidents, I'm not sure, but I think we better look at it very careful.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy, or Mr. Chair, and certainly appreciate the report and the comments made. I'll move the recommendation, and I certainly am pleased that Hamilton Cycling is moving forward with this suggestion, and I hope that the ministry will take this seriously in including an education program in the schools, and I think it should even go further now, especially with the amount of cycling that we have. I mean, I hear more and more, and I'm thrilled of cycling, I cycle myself, but I believe that we really need to make sure that rules are followed on the roads. And, you know, you've got vehicle or truck, you've got cyclists, you've got pedestrians, nobody's following rules today. And it frustrates me so much every time I get the request for speed bumps, the request for stop signs, and, you know, we can keep putting everything up there that we need to put up there, but we just need to continue to educate people. And I'm thrilled of trying to encourage through the school system the education on cycling. So I will certainly move this recommendation.
I have no other speakers, so I need to second to the motion. Seconded by Counselor Pauls. All in favor? Pose, that motion carries. Let's move on now to discussion items, because there is no public hearings and no staff presentations. And the first one is 10.1, which is a volunteer committee budget submission. Is there any discussion on 10.1? Moved by Pearson, seconded by my Whitehead. All in favor? Carried. 10.2, which is the Volunteer Committee for Keep Hamilton Clean. Is there any discussion? Counselor Jackson.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, and once again, congratulations. Look forward to working under your leadership. I just want, as an outgoing member of Keep Hamilton Clean and Green, having worked with a number of great citizens, staff, and Counselor Collins and Counselor Pearson the last four years, normally we try to stay within our maintenance budget, which is paragraph A, the $18,250 that we're asking for in 2019 operating, but in the B part, you see the additional requests, and if you read through the executive summary, it's been mostly because of the additional demand and complaints that we've had from law-abiding citizens regarding graffiti crime that seems to be occurring more frequently. In spite of our preventative educational programs and efforts, it seems to be occurring in certain areas, including in nice prestigious beautiful areas like parks and trails and schools and areas like that. So along with the graffiti initiatives, and quite frankly, on the plus side, we're seeing hundreds of more volunteers over the years that want to be part of the cleanups of our areas where there's unfortunately a lot of illegal dumping, debris, litter, garbage that's been discarded by some ne'er-do-wells in our community unfortunately, but it has inspired and motivated a number of our great citizens, more of them, to come out and be part of cleanup efforts. And as you know, April is our designated month through the year, Mr. Chairman, for cleanup efforts. So I just want, especially for the new members of Public Works Committee that are going to be delving into the budget more and more, typically the Keep Hamilton Clean and Green would try to stay within the annual maintenance budget, which is paragraph A. Paragraph B, though, again, it still has to go for budget deliberations the next few months, but that's why the additional request is there, to help combat graffiti crime. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counselor Danko.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just want to point out that the ask for $34,000 in total for the 2019 budget, we're leveraging 23,000 volunteers and nearly 14,000 bags of trash collected, which I think is a tremendous investment for the city of Hamilton. That's a great leverage of those taxpayer dollars. And just want to clarify that the ask for paragraph B, the $15,615, is a one-time ask. Is that correct?
Is that a question for staff?
Yes.
Okay. Director of Engineering, who's going to handle that?
Thank you, through the Chair, to the Counselor. That is correct, it's a one-time ask.
Thank you. Okay. Any other discussion? Counselor Marula.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now through you to Dan, or anyone that can answer the question. Last term, we implemented a, and Counselor Jackson triggered a memory, we implemented a proactive graffiti enforcement program, and as a pilot project, and I'm wondering what the status of the report of its success or lack thereof is, and when we'll be able to see that report. Through you, Mr. Chair.
Are you putting that question to?
Whoever can answer it, this is related to graffiti, the pilot project related to proactive graffiti enforcement.
Thank you, and good morning. Through the Chair, the proactive graffiti enforcement project, Public Works and the Planning and Economic Development Department have been working with municipal law enforcement, and the two dedicated officers on the pilot project that council had approved, and we've had great success with the proactive support for victim assistance of graffiti, and the report is coming back to council this spring on the comprehensive graffiti management strategy, and there was a number of initiatives that council was looking for a response back for, so a full sum report on all of those elements, including working with our colleagues in facilities, the security office, on a variety of other measures, and the police. We will be bringing back that report this spring sometime.
Counselor.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chairman. Jennifer, with respect to your preliminary assessment of it, do you foresee recommending the continuation of the program, or is it too premature to state that now?
Through the Chair, we have, in the last couple of meetings with the Clean and Green Committee, brought some of the preliminary information regarding the uptake of the victim assistance program, and it has been very positive, very well-received by these, in particular, repeat offender, repeat victims, sorry, of graffiti on private property, so it has been very well-received, and I think residents are, our preliminary results are encouraging in terms of helping to support them to remove, which we know is a very effective means to prevent future graffiti. So I think preliminarily, we could say that it has been well-received and a positive impact on addressing that matter in our community.
And through you, Mr. Chairman, an additional component to that initiative was to enhance video surveillance in parks and elsewhere with respect to graffiti and even stealing of copper and other metal issues at the bridge, the pedestrian bridge on the QEW. So through you, Mr. Chairman, what's the status of that particular aspect?
Through Chair, I can update you on the graffiti aspect. That will be included in this spring's report. In terms of other vandalism and theft, I'm not sure, but we are working with our colleagues in facilities, the security office, which are probably addressing a number of issues related to municipal property, and that will be encompassed in that report.
Sorry, I guess the question is related to the cameras. If you recall, we were discussing the cameras, we had a pilot project, and although I brought forward the motion, they all ended up in Ward 6, which was really quite remarkable. But what the status of that pilot project?
Counselor Ward 6 better, do they?
Oh, okay. Through you, Mr. Chairman.
Through the Chair, yes, that is a component that we're developing, the standard specifications for what kind of technology will best address the requests that council had asked us to report back on. So those options will be laid out with some recommendations this spring to enhance and/or expand that as a graffiti tool in the community.
Thank you, Jennifer, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Collins.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, and I was going to raise something at the end of the meeting under other business, but you've allowed a little latitude under this report. I was just going to ask, there's a, I mean, it's been a problem for a couple of years, and I'm not certain what our policy is related to the acid etching on bus shelters. So it is a form of graffiti, it's not the traditional paint on the side of a building, and I just noticed that, you know, the same familiar names that we've seen with graffiti tags on buildings and other public infrastructure are now showing up on the bus shelters, and I'm wondering what our policy is in that regard in terms of removing them. I'm assuming it's much more labor-intensive and more costly than spraying it off the side of a building, so I've just asked that maybe either as part of Jen's reporting back on our success to date as it relates to the proactive graffiti removal, if there's an opportunity for us to report back on our policies and procedures related to acid etching on bus shelters, I'd appreciate that.
Jennifer, Debbie, you don't have to respond now, the Counselor says he could accept it on a future report. Do you want to comment now?
Through the Chair, I just would add that part of our graffiti management strategy being developed with multiple stakeholders does include transit at the table and definitely recognizing that they have some slightly different challenges with the etching, that will be a component of our strategy coming forward, for sure.
Great, thank you. Counselor Jackson, just give me a good suggestion for the newcomers, Jennifer. Could you just introduce yourself and your title?
Good morning, thank you. Jennifer DiDomenico, and I'm in the Policy and Program Section in Public Works, and I'm working for Director Edward Soldo in Roads and Traffic.
Thank you. Okay, Counselor Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the previous comments with regards to the bus shelters, and I know on our transit on the buses themselves, there was an initiative last term where the, we stopped putting the plastic film on the windows to stop people from putting graffiti, and I think did we go with a clear film? And if that's the case, is that something that can be looked at on the shelters? I'm just going to leave that, or maybe Debbie would like to answer.
Debbie?
Morning, through the Chair. So we are looking at various applications. The issue around the bus shelters is the ability to put that clear film like we were able to do in the buses is quite expensive and labor-intensive to remove it and to keep up with that, but we are looking at what other options are available, testing some new cleaning products for graffiti that is not as a result of etching, and we'll be working closely with facilities as we embark on replacing all our shelters through the P2, Phase 2 project. So once we get that new infrastructure there to make sure that we're able to maintain it and not let it get to the point where it has gotten recently.
Appreciate that, I know staff will do everything they can. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So item 10.2, I have no more speakers, so a motion to accept the report? Moved by Nan, to Counselor Nan, seconded by Counselor Jackson. All in favor? Carry. Let's move on to minimum maintenance standard changes. This is item 10.3, this is before you. Counselor Collins.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I was hoping that staff could provide a brief explanation on the report, and then I do have two quick questions.
Edward, you're going to respond?
Yes, thank you, through the Chair, to the Counselor. The purpose of this report was to provide committee and council with an overview of the maintenance standards that changed in May. There was a number of areas where they have since changed, and what we're looking to do here is two recommendations. One is to develop an updated policy related to our maintenance standards here at the city that will look at consolidating both minimum maintenance standards as well as our existing policies that we currently have. The goal there really is to develop consistency across the board in terms of our policy, and what we'd like to do is come back to council as well with the costs, implications of each one. And the second one is related to a new provision underneath minimum maintenance standards which allows municipality to designate significant weather events. And the rationale behind that particular recommendation is in extreme weather events, the new minimum maintenance standards allows municipality to adjust how they actually undertake the minimumance of the roadways themselves. So what we'd basically do is, for lack of a better word, have almost a timeout in terms of when the minimum maintenance standards apply. This would only be utilized at very extreme winter events where we'd have two or three days of heavy snowfall, and that will allow us to reduce our liability from the event itself. So those are the main changes inside the report. It does speak to some of the changes that were done related to winter maintenance on bicycle lanes and sidewalks, as well as some of the other patrol obligations that we have through the minimum maintenance standards. Our goal is to come back to council in the future with a consolidated policy-related minimum standards that looks at both of ours and the minimum maintenance standards from the province, and provide you with that future report sometime this year.
Thanks, Edward, and through you, Mr. Chairman, I just want to be clear that the province, as part of the minimum maintenance standard requirements, is not suggesting that we alter our standards. Is it a case of then it's just the reporting of our standards for the purposes of, I know insurance has been, and risk has been written into the report, so to be clear, we're not changing anything? Or are you suggesting through this report that we are changing standards in various parts of the organization?
Edward?
Thank you, through the Chair, to the Counselor. There are some new areas where standards have been applied by the province, but we are not changing our standards. Our standards in many of these areas actually exceed the standards from the province.
So this is more of an accounting exercise and a reporting mechanism that's been required by the province, and we're fulfilling our obligations under the Act?
Edward?
That's correct.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
Counselor Whitehead.
Yeah, and again, I'm trying to understand the implications of any changes, but what isn't acknowledged here in this report, and we know this in the context of climate change and even rain events, that, and it certainly happens in the winter as well, is that we have, and we have microclimates in Hamilton itself. So areas of the city of Hamilton could get hit much harder with a major snow event than others. So how, I guess, dynamic is this approach in regards to some of the changes you're referencing?
Thank you, through the Chair, to the Counselor. The standards apply to all city roadways. In terms of the microclimates that we have, we do monitor them, we are well aware of the different climates that we have in various parts of the different climates that we have in various parts of the city. It, that is more of an operational item on when we actually initiate our services that we provide out there. So we, we do monitor the weather on a daily basis. We have systems in place to ensure that we're out there at the right time with the resources we need to actually deliver the minimum standards that have been outlined here.
So I think what I'm getting at though is, for example, let's just say the rural area, watered down, and that area may be more in a snow belt, and, and when you talk about a major snow event, they may actually have it where the balance of the city isn't impacted by it. So when you exercise these different minimum standards, is that citywide or is that would be geographic specific within the city?
Standards apply to the entire city. It's just a matter of how much resources we put to deal with those significant events in those areas. So if we have an area that's getting more snow, we're applying the resources there to ensure that we meet the minimum standards.
Okay. Help me understand how we are ensuring that our constituents are meeting the minimum standards now. And last winter, I went out several times with our roads crew at 6:00 a.m. in the morning, which we clearly identified that areas of, sort of my ward, wasn't even coming close to meeting the minimum standards. And the reason we knew this is because we went to other district areas, and we could see the stark contrast between same collector roads, same material roads, and the, the snow that was removed. So it appears to me that from one district to another, there's different applications of the rules, and therefore, the same standards are not being met.
Through the Chair, to the Counselor. Our standards are being met equally across all areas, it's just a matter of when we're finalizing the service in the area. And I would, I'd take you to Appendix A, page 6. Depending on the class of the roadway, we have a certain amount of time to actually respond to that event. So it could be anywhere from four hours to 16 hours. So within that timeframe, we are meeting the standard. Some of the districts or some of the areas might be getting done first, that's where the resources roll out, but we are meeting the standard in terms of the timeline when we actually have to get the roadways cleared.
So my understanding, and I did take pictures, that we have snow-packed collector roads, major roads into neighborhoods that were completely snow-packed, and then you go to the same roadway in a different district, and it would be bare. So what is the standard?
Standard is that we'd be bare within 16 hours if it's on a Class 3 roadway. It's just a matter of when we apply the resources. We can't be out there instantaneously across the entire city at the same time, so it's a matter of how we're getting to that particular area.
So, Mr. Chairman, I think what I'm defining here is that different districts apply different strategies in regards to snow removal. And when you have a ward that has a split between the two districts, I'm looking at the same classification of roadways. There's a stark difference in the actual standards that are being met. I raised this before, and I will continue raising it, and, you know, there is certainly a log where I have actually gone out with the superintendent and verified these very findings. So I hope that we are, from a policy point of view, ensuring that the superintendents understand and appreciate that where taxpayers are paying taxes evenly, equally across the city relative to the services they receive, and they should be receiving those services. And it appears, and I'll be certainly monitoring it this winter as well, that the, the standards across any ward should meet those minimum standards, and no area should get greater level of service than others. Thank you.
Okay, I have no other speakers. Just one quick question before we go to approval. Edward, just for the benefit of the committee. So you're saying this will have no impact on the 2019 budget. It may have an impact on 2020, but that will be in the report coming back to us. However, will you be able to show us a chart, because I didn't see it, maybe it's here, but I didn't see it, a chart showing the old and the new, so we can see what's changed when your report comes back?
Through the Chair, we can definitely do that. What I would say to you right now is, looking at the standards, we meet or exceed all of them for the most part. So we don't anticipate an increase in budget, but we wanted to have enough operational data as we move forward to provide you with that when we come back with the, the new standards.
Okay, so on item 10.2, vote, Counselor Whitehead.
On the other, on the cycling one, I just want to understand, because you said you're going to look at the additional costs as we afford, which is great. I'm not sure if we have winter numbers in regards to cycling, so we kind of need to match the, the dollars being spent versus the, the usage. And the last piece is, wherever we have separation, in some cases, we included operating cost, like Cannon. Other areas, like Kirkhamer, we did not. So help me understand, when you do this, some of the money's already being identified within the implementation of those cycle lanes, others have not. So can you isolate where we didn't, in this, this report when you come forward, areas where we currently have barriers but no operating dollar, additional operating dollars were identified?
Thank you, through the Chair, to Counselor. That's actually one of the main purposes of this report. As we move forward, we want to make sure we provide counsel with clear understanding of what the costs are as we implement any more facilities. So we have been tracking them, and we'll be coming back with that exact information that the Counselor asked for.
Thank you.
Okay, see, no more. Counselor Farr.
I'm just glad the previous speaker had brought this forward. I read this on the weekend, I thought I should ask, and it slipped my mind. So through you to Ed, if we're measuring different costs, and in this case, it's seasonal snow removal, but, you know, one of the strong arguments by those who advocate for this higher order and sustainable type of transportation, in particular on the lanes that are protected and separated, are we, over time, going to measure, through you, Chair, the savings with respect to the maintenance that is expected when you don't have vehicles every day, thousands of cars a day driving in those lanes? Can we also measure that over time through you?
Edward, do you anticipate there will be lower maintenance costs on the roads because people are cycling?
Through the Chair, to the Counselor. I'm going to start, and maybe Mr. Hollingworth would like to add as well. As we divert more people onto cycling, there is obviously a change in mode split. There'd be less cars potentially driving on the roadway, but at the same time, we are growing as a city. So to differentiate that cost, I think would be very different, difficult to do, to identify that savings in maintenance costs. I'm not sure if Brian would like that.
Counselor Farr?
I'm sorry, it would be difficult. So what causes, through you, Chair, wear and tear on a road? What's the most likely culprit?
I think, Edward, I don't want to take words out of your mouth, but I think of what I heard you say is because of growing population, he doesn't see a reduction of vehicle traffic. But to answer the Counselor's question, so what causes wear and tear?
Where, through the Chair, to the Counselor, wear and tear on, on any roadway is really determined by the load that the road's taking, and that comes back to types of vehicles that you have on the roadway.
So I, I maybe wasn't clear, and Ed's been great, by the way, so I'm really glad we're going to be able to converse both in committee, but obviously outside of committee we'll continue to. So I don't want to, I don't want to sound like I'm patronizing, but obviously bikes weigh a heck of a lot less than trucks and cars. So over time, would a bike lane not wear and tear as much as those lanes that are seeing buses and cars and, and, and everything else that's heavy?
Edward?
Through the Chair, to the Counselor, yes. Intuitively, they have less load, so they would have less wear and tear than any other vehicle.
So I, I'm just trying to understand your answer then, Ed, through you, Chair. Why would it be hard over time to measure, you know, what we're putting into repairing bike lanes versus car and bus lanes?
Through the Chair, to the Counselor, I believe your question was related to the number of cyclists that are out there determining how many cars are on, on there. We could come up with some theoretical numbers, but actuals would be a lot more difficult to do.
Okay. In principle, though, like in theory, rather through you, Chair, would you, would you not agree that over time, you're more likely to have to address in a capital repair way those lanes that are occupied by, as you note, the culprits who caused the damage, the trucks and cars versus the lanes that only have bikes on them? Through you? That's basically what I'm trying to get at. It might help over time in the arguments where we maybe are paying for some operational costs, as the previous speaker noted, that are a concern to some, because you've got to get smaller equipment on those protected bike lanes. But over time, I think you're probably looking at a major savings because you are less likely to repair more often a bicycle lane versus those that the cars and trucks drive.
I think Edward has answered the question, but I'll come to you next, Counselor Pauls. The, is there anything further you want to add to that, Dan?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, maybe this is just language, but I think as a general premise, we could agree that cycling lanes, the lifecycle cost of cycling lanes is probably going to be less as a result of the issues that the council is identifying. I think it may be difficult for us to determine with certainty what those are. But as we go through Bill 6, we're likely going to have to start to turn our minds to what the differences are between the lifecycle costs of a lane that has vehicle traffic versus the lifecycle cost of a lane that has a cycling infrastructure.
Counselor Pauls?
Okay, I just wonder, we're talking about these bike lanes, which is great, and I'm a biker, but we're saying how spend more money. What is the percentage of people that use bike lanes? Right now, we have cars everywhere. We can't say, oh, let's put all our money in biking, because everybody's going to bike in the future. We need to know how many people are using the bike, especially in the winter, especially downtown Hamilton in the winter where there's snow. We don't want to spend all this money figuring that out. We don't have the percentage now. We're talking about 10, 20, 30 years from now where everybody's going to use bike lanes.
Does staff have their fingertips? I know that returning members of council have seen the percentage of motorists, percentage of transit, percentage of walkers, and percentage of cyclists. Does staff have that? Brian, do you have it?
Through the Chair, I don't have the exact numbers by memory, but they are in the Transportation Master Plan, and I can commit to sending them to the Counselor. I think cycling's in the order of 3% to 5%, but much higher in the downtown, and collectively, cycling and pedestrians are somewhere in the order of 10%. But I'll go, I'm going by memory, so I'll commit to send those numbers. And just to add to the previous conversation, I think it speaks to the importance of doing evidence-based planning for any transportation decision, which, which we're committed to do. The more we can collect volumes on usage, savings in design as a result of different design impacts on maintenance, we're committed to doing that in the future, and have been.
I just don't see in the winter months, especially January, February, March, you know, 1%, 2%, maybe 3% of people using bikes, and we're trying to figure out how it's going to save that road. We have to realize we live in a climate where there's snow, and we have to be smart about it. And I'm a biker, I bike all the time, but sometimes I don't bike right in the middle of the roads downtown. But anyways, that's all I'm concerned. We're talking about, like, my colleague here, Mr. Farr, saying, isn't it better, you know, we make sure we spend the money on those bike lanes, but we have to really think about it, and I want to know how, what percentage it is.
We have those stats available. Brian's undertaken to get them out to us. So, Counselor Whitehead.
Just for clarification, is, on the lifecycle cost of roadway, and I don't dispute that cycles, cyclists, there'll be a longer lifecycle on, on the laneways. But the reason why there's no real savings as a result of that is that it's still sharing the same roadway, and you still have the, the underneath piping and utilities and so forth, and there's still lifecycle on all of that. And those roadways, based on their lifecycle, you're going to curb to curb. You're not just going to the edge or the demarcation of those cycle lanes. So there literally wouldn't be any real savings on the lifecycle cost of those laneways based on the nature of the things I've just identified.
Okay, so that's, no more speakers. Counselor Farr?
Chair, being a newbie to Public Works, through you, to staff, real quick, what, what's more likely to cause a pothole, a bus or a bike?
Ben's who's writing it. That was, that's a rhetorical question, I assume, is it?
You can take it that way.
I'll take it that way. Okay, so Counselor Collins moves 10.3, seconded by?
The Information Report.
No, it's, there's actual recommendations.
It basically, seconded by Counselor.
Okay, so you're moving the recommendation?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's good to know. So moved by Counselor Collins, seconded by Counselor Marula. All in favor?
Carried.
Carried. I'm going to move on to motions now, and I'm going to ask Counselor J. John Paul Danko to take the chair for a minute. If you push your button, I'll turn you on. Okay, we're heading into the budget season, and, so I have a motion that I'd like to place today, and I like to waive the rules because we are?
Counselor, just, there's another motion ahead of the noise motion.
I'm on 11.1?
11.1.
Oh, you're right, my apologies, my apologies. I'm going to take the chair back now.
We'll pass that back.
You can hit your button to turn it off if you like. So at the interview subcommittee, there's, Marula, is there any other volunteer? Seconded by Counselor Nan. So they're moving, Counselor, Counselor Collins is moving, Counselor Marula and Counselor Nan, seconded to that. Turn your microphone, I can't hear you.
We need three counselors, please.
Need three?
Yes.
Is there a third one? Anybody would like to volunteer? Counselor Pauls. So we have three. So moved by Counselor Collins, seconded by Counselor Pearson. All in favor? Carried, thank you. Let's move on to item 12. Notice this is a motion. Now, Counselor Danko, I'll let you take the chair. I'd like to move to waive the rules to start with, because this is something that's, have they been distributed, the motions?
Yep.
Okay, so I'd like to move to waive the rule since it's just for a staff report and it's coming back, or the results have to come back for the Transit Day, which is coming up shortly after the next Congress. Seconded by Counselor Vanderbeek, oh, sorry, Speaker, is that now? Counselor Collins?
I was going to speak to you.
I'm waiving the rules, no, on is making.
I'm waiving the rules, no.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so, I have to ask, all in favor?
All in favor?
Okay, so now I'll move the motion, and Counselor Collins, did you still want to second this?
Yes.
Okay, so moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Collins. And this is a transit matter, whereas the Public Works Committee approved the purchase of a passenger count system for $2.2 million, and whereas we're going into year four of the Transit Master Plan, and whereas a significant investment has been made in the first three years of implementing the 10-year plan, therefore be resolved, the staff report back a Transit Day, the results of the passenger counts and list of routes that are carrying less than 15 passengers per trip at peak times, and seconded the staff report back on Transit Day with a review of assumptions made when the 10-year Transit Study was done and compare them to the actual results or issues like ridership on issues like ridership and population. So just very briefly, Mr. Chairman, to speak to this, is, we saw in the, in our first two budget days that there's a significant increase in the Public Works Budget directed towards Transit. I think everything else is around the 1.5%. But Transit, both HSR and DARTs are seeing a significant increase, and this is all part of continuing to implement the 10-year strategy, Transit Strategy. And there's a lot of assumptions made four years ago when this report was put together, and I just want to test those assumptions. There's an, and two, for example, are ridership, and I hear that ridership in 2018 may be trending back up, but the previous years, it trended down. And, and so, in the, in year four, what was our assumption on ridership? What was our assumption on population? And what was our assumption on everything else that was in that report? Just to make sure we're going down the right, right road, because four years is a long time, 10 years is probably too long. And, and every year, we're seeing staff come back, as they should, to implement the 10-year strategy, because that was the direction of council. I just want to get this information back. How are we doing? And on the passenger count, you know, Transit is something that's always in demand, and we've added a lot of new routes, and we saw a significant increase in 2018 on our Transit Budget, and, and proposed again for significant increases in 2019. So where these routes have been added, but also all our existing routes, what's our passenger count? We've spent the $2.2 million to have the technology to know how many riders are on these buses. And I would like a summary, a list, of the routes that are carrying less than 14 passengers at peak times, which is 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. and 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. The reason I picked the 14 number is that was the number that various Transit Directors have said. have set when you can justify a transit line. So the motion is before you, and once again, it's just for a report back on Transit Day to help us make the right decision on that significant budget increase that our General Manager of Public Works is proposing. Thank you, Councillor Collins.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, and I'm happy to second it, and I think the timing's appropriate in terms of what we have on the horizon, in terms of the PTIF I and II, as well as obviously the fourth year of the Transit Strategy. So I'm happy to second the motion, I'm looking forward to that. And I'm just curious to know whether the, just as an aside, whether the passenger counts, the system that we invested in, I know we were working out some of the bugs last year, has that been fully implemented in time to receive information that may be presented on Transit Day? Through you, Mr. Chairman.
Question to staff? Debbie?
Through the chair, so we completed the installations of all our automatic passenger counters at just the beginning of this year. We have spent a significant amount of staff time trying to ream from that data, the information that we need to make some decisions based on the data that we've collected, and we will be able to report back to that on Transit Day. So we are seeing that information, and I just also want to remind council, we just implemented year four of the Transit Strategy, sorry, year three of the Transit Strategy in September of this year, so we've just added additional service from September of this year. So we didn't add any additional routes, we just increased the service levels on the various routes that were identified as part of the 10-year strategy.
Very good, thanks for the information.
No further speakers? Motion, call the vote? All those in favor?
Carried.
Motion passes.
Is anybody opposed? Okay, that motion carries. I'll take the chair back now, councillor. Okay, is there any other notices of motion? Seeing none, item 13, general information of the business, we have a motion for movement or second to approve the amendments to the outstanding business list. Moved by Councillor Collins, seconded by Councillor Marula, all in favor? That's carried. There's closed session minutes, have a motion to approve the September 17, 28 closed session minutes. Moved by Councillor Whitehead, seconded by Councillor Pauls, all in favor? That's carried. And motion to adjourn, Councillor Pearson, seconded by Councillor Vanderbeek, all in favor? Carried, thank you.